I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Council may have a motion for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda, second.
Voice is in main, second by Larry, to approve the agenda in favor of Speaker Bobby Sayne.
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda approved. Consent agenda.
Most of you approve the consent agenda, all hands of curieux.
Second, Doug.
Voice is in main, second by King, to approve the consent agenda. May I have a roll call, please?
Counsel Robinson, aye. Counsel Shepherd?
Aye.
Counsel Fisher?
Aye.
Counsel King?
Aye.
Counsel Levering?
Aye.
Counsel Piper?
Aye.
Mayor Barnhart?
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. Next, business vote comment? Anything not on the agenda? Would anybody like to address this for something I'm going to be talking about? Seeing now, we'll move on to our continuing of our fiscal year budget here.
May I, Counsel? I'm going to start here for a moment. And then I'll move over there. So we are several weeks into our preliminary budget. And as folks know, we have talked about various components of the budget as we move through it. So currently, our 23-24 fiscal year budget. And right now, I'm just looking at, I gave you guys PowerPoints copies of them so you can write on them, so we'll write questions. And also, I try to make it big enough so everybody can see it. So currently, we're looking at just over 20 million. It's about 500,000 less than last year. So we are, as a smaller city, and you guys hear me say this every year, the difference between grants and projects greatly affect us. So this year, we finished two water projects. We finished Fifth Avenue East North and the generator. It's really nice not to be rolling those over into a new fiscal year. We've also finished a portion of the sewer project. We're about 60% complete on the lift station upgrade as well as the sewer main on that. So with that, so last year, our budget was about 20 million, 20.5, right? So the general fund is higher this year from what we originally adopted because when we originally adopted last year's budget, we didn't have the three firemen, right, our three paid firefighters because we had applied for a FEMA grant, so we were waiting. And so we brought them on halfway through the year. This reflects three full-time firefighters plus our additional police officer. And we're going to talk about the general fund in more detail. But special revenue funds are down about 190,000. And that just has to do with where projects are and what's going on in the future goes, we'll talk in detail. Debt service, we're down to $35,729. And folks, we talked about debt service and capital in detail during this project, but during all of our hearings. But we paid off the street debt five years early. So that's 45,000 less than last year. So and then this debt service includes paying off the remainder for the ladder truck, that internal debt. And so what we're left with then are the SID 34 and 36. They're paid off in the 2025 year. It's hard to believe they're 20 years. And then SID 38, which is where it was. And then, so water, water is only 1,051 this year. It's down about 443,000. Again, that's because we finished projects. And then sewer, sewer's down about 810,000. And again, it's because we then finished the projects and we rolled over. And then our fire relief pension remains the same because we're actually early funding it. So we funded the 67,000 to 67 each year. So on a chart, that's what this looks like. So for comparison purposes, last year sewer was 40%, but remember, we had another 800,000 in capital. Water was 7%, capital projects were 6%. We're going to talk in more detail on capital projects. Debt service was 1%, it's zero this time. Special revenue is still 28% of our total. And the general fund is up about 3%. So where do we, where do we get our money? Well, our revenues, so this year cash carryover is not as much, right? Because one, last year, we were carrying over projects and carrying over some other cash balance with that every time we carry over a project. So taxes and special assessments, you're going to see that it's up 166,000, but not real estate taxes. It's the resort tax. Because last year, we budgeted 797,000 net to the city. This year, we're budgeting 1.5 million, which is still, net to the city, which is still a conservative number. Real estate taxes are cut about 50%. We're going to talk about that. Licenses and permits are down. We're budgeting considerably less in building permits based on activity and what happened last year. We only hit about 64% in our permit revenue. And we also have in state law that now if you are a specific contractor, plumbing and electrical, and I'm looking at my expert here, then effective October 1, we can no longer issue business licenses to them, but we have to look at their state licenses and so that's the like. But general contractors still get business licenses. So intergovernmental, including grants, is up a little bit. Charges for services up a little bit. Fines and forfeits down, just as mentioned. Our court is all caught up and they're busy and they're active. But there's not a backlog and it's fresh. So we are, investment earnings and miscellaneous, investment earnings is up, miscellaneous is down a little bit. Other financing sources, that's our transfers in, right? So transfers in as a revenue source equal transfers out as a revenue source. Big chunk of this is the resort tax, and we'll talk about that. And then, of course, for the sewer project and capital, from the general fund into our capital programs this year is only 158,000. So total revenues, here's our pie. All right. So where are our categories? So personal services, that's all base wages. Over time, the state contribution for retirement, our contribution for retirement. Everything personal services is 21% of our budget. Operating and maintenance, which includes our insurance and gas and keeping the lights on and buying the supplies, 14.5%. Capital, now 8 million, right, because we have street construction, sewer project, and sidewalk project. So that's 8 million bucks, that's 40% of this total budget. Depreciation, debt service, a little tiny number. This debt service number includes the debt service in water and sewer. And then transfers, that are 19% of the total. So all very familiar. This is it in high chart form, right? And does not vary much from year to year. Last time, personal services were 16%. Remember, it depends on the pie. Operation was 14%. Capital, which was much higher last time, was 47% of the budget. So remember, we're within 500,000 of last year's budget. So a little less capital, a little more operation. Transfers were only 18% last year. Debt service and depreciation were the same. So now we want to talk about the levy. And as we've discussed, even so with that 34% increase in our tax base, we would have dropped 20 mills. So we would have dropped 20 mills from the 181 that we levied last year. We would have dropped 20, just based on, and I, this chart really shows it, right? We, whoops. So mills, so value goes up, mills go down. So we would have, so we're dropping 90 mills this year. We're going to reduce our mill levy by 90.36 mills. We levied 181.01. This chart. 20 of those mills would have dropped, just from value up, mills down. The other 70.49 mills are from the resort tax, 849,000 dollars. So yes, we're funding police and fire at the levels that we said we need, right? So this is working. So for every hundred thousand dollars of residential value, the taxes are only going to be 122.38 for every hundred thousand. So for mine, remember my tax bill that we talked about at a couple of these meetings, my city taxes will go from 751 dollars to 536 dollars. So I have a 43% increase in my taxable valuation. We're dropping mills. I'm going to see a 29% decline in my taxable. City taxes. Now, the county, I know you guys read the newspapers too and you would watch our sister cities' budgets and the county's budget and the school's budget, right? Because we're tied to dollars, value up, mills down. We're just blessed that we also have the resort tax that allows us to fund what we need to get funded while creating a reduction in taxes. So it's a win. So residential property is taxed at 1.35% of your value, says value. Commercial, last word, commercial is taxed at 1.80. So for every hundred thousand of commercial property, they'll pay 170.78. So when we look at our total, so like my value went up 43%. We know that our total value, that the average increase was 34%. So when we look at a 29% reduction in the, you know, tax base for our taxpayers, it's working as we thought, right? So that's the mill levy. Now, the question is, I've plugged in two mills for the emergency levy. The states, the federal government, so this kind of came to light because we had that FEMA project in the park. FEMA will only pay for restoration, like the PA program, will pay 75%. The state won't give us money unless we already spent two mills. Now, our resident expert, Ms. Robinson, she dealt with the '03 and the '06 fires. Like, that was her job, doing those files. I audited those files, they were perfect. But the county had to spend two mills before they ever got a mill. So our general fund, right, is picking up some of the 25%. And then for admin costs, even though you have engineering and so on, they only give you 5% of the total project, which was 65,000. So the question is, and Counsel, this is entirely up to you. I've plugged in two mills, but you don't have to levy those two mills. You can tell me tonight, you can tell me at the next meeting. So our next meeting, according to the county step vote, they want us to certify our mills so that we can get it on the tax bills. But you guys can decide, do we want to levy the two mills and hold it? Do we just want to run those, you know, a few thousand dollars? Probably about 15,000 that we're not going to get. Counties historically always kind of keep those two mills. They just kind of keep it there. But look all around us, look in the county right now. They needed those two mills for every one of these fire responses. Because as soon as they spent their two mills, the state emergency fund should keep them. It doesn't happen to us very often. This is the first, first in my history with the city sentence, 1998, the first time in our history that they've said, did you spend your two mills? So that's a question for you guys. You could further reduce your mill levy by two mills. Just throwing that out there. Or we can levy it and we can have it just in case.
And that, what's that total amount?
So two mills at 12,000, it's about 24,058 dollars. Or you can decide that, hey, we have this 20% reserve in our general fund and we have some, we have a little bit of leeway there that if something happens, we're going to spend the money out of our general fund.
And it would be that same amount, but it would come out of the general fund?
Right, the equivalent. The state and federal government doesn't care where you spend it. And these are permissive mills, right, meaning that you can keep them. So the county has had, historically, a few more emergencies, and they have levied those mills. Or they keep it, say they had to spend a little bit, right? Maybe not all two mills, but they had to spend something on an emergency. Or in this case, your mill value goes up like ours, right? Went up 34% from 8,969 dollars, the mill to 12,029. Well, if they had, if they had that 17,000 tucked away and now they needed 24,000, they levied that portion of the mill levy, right? So that you have the two mills in reserve if you needed it. So that's a question, do we want to do that? Because it came up, you know, with this last project. Like, well, do you have your two mills? Did you spend your two mills worth? So we are not, in this case, going to the 25% and the additional admin costs for engineering are not going to exceed two mills. So the state wouldn't give us a dime. If they did, say we spent, say the excess costs were 30,000 and they were using last year's mill levy, right? Because that's when the catastrophe happened. And they said, well, did you spend your 17,000? Yeah, we did. They would give us the 13,000. So this was, the flood damage repair is a fairly small project. Had it been larger, had it damaged more, it only damaged some of our gravel, our packed gravel paths, as well as one section of pavement. Had it damaged more of that, right? We could be very well having a different conversation then. Yeah, let's keep this because we want to be able to activate those state funds, which the state funds also come from the federal government. You know, they trickle down, but that's the rule. So think about that.
Do we want to have a discussion about that on 41 week presentation?
I would just as well have it now while it's fresh.
I mean, two. And comments here?
I would just, sorry, I would keep the two mills in there. I think that's a good safety net. Counties and other states do it for reason, and I'd be happy just to keep them in.
What else?
I agree.
Good to answer. I have an issue with that thing, telling you that most of the cost is 24,000 and we're still covered, right?
You, right, the two mills.
Right, so if something happens, we're still going to pay it.
You're going to pay up to two mills.
But it's going to come out of our general fund, probably.
You could spend it out of your general fund.
Right, but in any case, it's going to cost us not much money. So it's a matter of do we want to add those two mills? Or do we want to not add them and just say if it happens, we're going to pay for one of them. I guess that's my question, so I'm not in favor of doing it, but you guys, how do you feel?
I think we're in a good position. I think keeping the two mills in there is prudent.
So you want to keep those extra two mills in there?
I think it would be different if we weren't in a situation where the old time drops so much already and you know where it's a little closer. I feel like it's a good safety net for us.
24,000 dollars safety net.
I know it's not much, but.
I'm just thinking, I just, I just look at the, you know, when you have an opportunity to do something like that, instead of betting on the old bridge, you're keeping things. So that's my philosophy, but. So it sounds, I don't know that we need a vote. I think it's almost unanimous. So Suzie, you get an answer on that?
I did.
I have a question. I'd like to know why Susan put it in there.
I put it in there because I hadn't even considered it before.
Oh.
The general fund, there's not, like, our departments, our departments budget conservatively. Well, and so do I, so does the council. There's not a lot of fluff in that budget. That if, that if there was something that came up, you know, we happen to, you know, be like, you know, we have the 20% reserve policy, right? But it would mean though, that if we had a year where we were spending money, which when we go through the general fund in more detail, I mean, we've talked about large projects and things in there and staffing and so on, but you know, now the culmination of the whole piece together, there's not a lot there. So I put it in there because it had not, we had not been in a position where they said, did you spend your two mills? Well, you've got your permissive mills, right? Permissive to set it in the budget. And it did occur to me that counties always do that. It's prudent, it's a reserve, right? So it's a reserve outside of the general fund so that you can also show them that, yes, see, we have these mills and we spend them.
Or we didn't spend them.
Or we didn't spend them. So then you just reserve it because this isn't going to change. Like, if we levy these, you're going to see it on the chart. So you'll notice I didn't have an expenditure, right? Because we would just reserve them. And just keep them there for safety net. And if value, if we thought we needed, you know, a fraction of the mill to put it in there. But we ourselves had not been in that position. It's not to say, I mean, I think we got lucky with the damage and the good bids that we did get, that working with those contractors to get that work repaired. It could have been a lot more money. And we'd be having a whole other conversation.
What happens if you have multiple events? Each time you have to come up with two mills?
No, well, no, I don't believe so.
So when she, have you made your two mills towards that?
Well, in 2003, when we had the multiple fires, it was just.
Just once, right. And then it triggers, and it triggers.
And we had Roberts Fire and Beta Complex and fires all over.
But it's good. So I did it because we had not considered that before, that we don't have the mills in there. Traditionally, counties always do. And some cities, we just have never done it. And so we should be thinking ahead. Because it's much easier to have it there than to have to levy it after the fact or fund it out of your general fund and then levy it. And it only, I guess to me, it was a conservative approach.
Any further questions? So I guess you have your answer, Susan.
Okay, so before I go up there, we're going to talk about the general fund a little bit. So general fund, right, there's property taxes. And I apologize if you folks can't see that. 722,969 dollars, 17% of the budget. 608,000 less than last year. But look at the, but look at transfers in, 1,506, 36%. So 916,000. 849,000 of that is actually coming from the reserve. And then the money for police department and the money for the fire department. And we have other funds, we have other funds reserved. But intergovernmental revenues up just a little bit. Charges for services, 7% of the budget. Fines, like I said, I estimate it a little lower because they're coming in a little bit lower. Investment earnings are up considerably. We started last year, like when we ended 23, the average interest earnings was below 1%. And we ended this year with the average interest earnings at 4%. So, and you can see cash carryover is less, right? Because we've spent money, like we rolled over money and we spent it. Two years ago, we had the CARES Act money, right, that helped us, rolled us through. So 4.2 million is up 349,000 dollars. So what are we doing with this money? Well, this is what we're doing with this money. We are, my favorite topic here, fire. Fire is up 165%. It's, this budget changed 415,000 dollars. Remember, in last year's approved budget, we didn't have those three firefighters. And police, so that might, so they're only up, only 69,000 this year. It's only up 4.2%. But the year before, they were up 189,000. You might remember, right, it was our priority. We have to add, we have to get another police officer. So we stole it from other departments. Right, police officer, right, police officer. That's because we knew that the resort tax was coming, right? So we said, all right, we'll put less money, right? We gave them another 189,000. You can see transfers dropped 129,000. So now, so now, as we come through here, so their budget, police, gets 166,000 dollars from the resort tax, right? Which, I mean, it's not all, because it's not all tax, like, property taxes are a little chunk of the budget. A big part of the narrative, but a little chunk of the budget. So, and then fire, right? Fire gets 207,000 from resort tax. And yes, we increased that budget 415,000 dollars. Now, the rural fire district also pay, contributes money, right? They pay for half the teeth, they're paying 100,000 dollars for a firefighter. And I have those costs. So we're doing exactly what we said we were going to do. So the budget raised 550,000 dollars. And you can see the little ins and outs. You know, this facilities maintenance, for example, went up. Well, 23,000 dollars of that is going for the police department. Which isn't in, it's a facility, not a police budget, I know. So here we are, here's our pie. And I tried to, I could not get it good way. So this, these are 41%. That's, that's in line with where they tend to fall. And then fire, which is this, like, not a good red color, is 16% now of the budget. So things like admin stayed the same. Facilities maintenance is up just a little bit, parks, trees. So I want to now go into, I'm going to go over there and talk to you guys and I'm going to go through your packet. I can stand up, I sat way too much on airplane and my back's still. So this is the intro to this year's, this year's budget. Like I said, we've talked about pieces, pieces of your budget until we get to this is where we're at. The one thing I have not added in, the finance director will add in the Raze Grant Fund. So even though it's 10 million dollars and the city will contribute 500,000. and the city will contribute five hundred thousand for the water being. We won't, we are this close, this close to that signed contract. They just asked for some additional information, but. We are only going to start out this year, this fiscal year, will do the request for proposals for the preliminary engineering, which is approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. We won't put ten million dollars in this year's budget because we're, that will be the next fiscal year and a half, right? We won't be constructing ready yet. So, um, so we have not put in that placeholder. So I'm going to stop sharing this. Where's my original share? Maybe I'll just stop sharing. I will. If I come back to, yeah, when I close this, go back to here. So that this page, so I just had your introductory memo. We are going to start by talking about these levy funds. So if anybody needs to stretch. I'm coming over here. I better take my water with me. And then Barb, I'll tell you when we, tell you when we get to the other page, but. So we will start with our general fund and, um. I'll still talk loud. General funds, fire relief pension, permissive medical, and of course, we had the discussion on emergency disaster. So. We start out with, with revenue pages and they start out with page one of thirty-four and so on. So the, I'm going to hit highlights. Please yell at me, wave at me if you want, if you have questions. So new this year is this little budget that climbed out of thirteen thousand dollars. It's the local option marijuana tax that we are going to get passed through department revenue, through Flathead County, and finally to us. So our first collections were effective June. For March and April, they were thirty-two hundred and seventy-four dollars. The county gave us that money in July. So the department of revenue, they set up, it doesn't match our quarters. It's kind of like the, oh, step grant, it doesn't match our quarters. So the first quarter that's distributed in June. February first through April thirtieth, then comes out September fifteenth. May through July, third quarter is December fifteenth is for August through October. And then the fourth quarter, it comes March fifteenth, November through January thirty-first. So that was the voted levy at the county's level that we'll get. So that's, that's new here. So you can see that seven hundred and seven thousand six sixty-nine that we're going to be levying, that net amount. The net amount here. So we could have levied one million five hundred and fifty-five thousand five ninety-four. And then we offset it eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So the seven hundred and seven thousand plus the levy amount into fire relief. Because these are our fifteen, ten, four, twenty funds, right? So we're, so we're levying sixty-two point four six mills. We were allowed one thirty, one thirty-two. This, this one and this one together. That was our allowable mill levy. This is what we're doing, sixty-two point four. Permissive medical. The emergency disaster for a total of ninety point three six. So you can see that year change, five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars less, ninety point six five mills. So the other, so that's tax revenue. Any questions? Okay. I already talked about business licenses, how they changed that a little bit. Our state entitlement increased three point three eight six percent. So that money gets distributed between the general fund and our fire relief pension fund. So it's up three percent this year. That's on page two of thirty-four, state entitlement. That's our big chunk. And we have that other line item. Nowhere's the one in. So we have the state on behalf. State on behalf, we have the book. It is. It shows up as a revenue and an expenditure. So the police, the state contributes twenty-nine point three seven percent toward retirement. We contribute fourteen point four one. We have to record the expenditure and the revenue. So that, that now totals, because, you know, with the firefighters. Oh, I see. I didn't update this one number in here, correct, this number. That three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars is our state on behalf. So that's a big, it's a big chunk, but like I said, the revenues, we never see cash, right? It's a, it's an offset. So that, those are our major intergovernmental revenue sources, state entitlement and state on behalf. And then, um, charges for services. So you'll see, so page three of the revenues. Special fire protection is up to a hundred and ninety-five thousand because now they're contributing a hundred thousand for a firefighter. Ninety thousand for their other regular costs. And then we still get five thousand from, from C-FAC because we have a, they're, they're, they're in no man's land. They're not in the rural fire district, so they don't pay taxes. The city, for decades, um, during the tenure of, of Dawn and John, they've always had a contract to protect those buildings. And what they said was, as long as we have buildings standing out there, we're going to pay this contract. Right? Because our fire department responds. So that, so that shows a thirty-seven percent increase and that's because of paid firefighters. So that's the big, that was the big increase in charges for services for the general fund. Like I said, I adjusted fines and forfeitures based on where, where we're landing now. And then investment earnings is up. So. The twenty-four fiscal year transfers from other financing sources is up two hundred and fifty-five percent from five hundred and ninety thousand to one million five oh six. Tax relief, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand nine twenty-five seventy-nine, which you see there. Police department, one sixty-six, two ninety-two. That is, so remember we have the fifty-five percent for public safety? In the beginning, you put sixty-four percent for fire, thirty-six percent for police. That's you. That's, that's not part of the vote. You guys can change that at any time. The fire chief should have been sitting here at the same time, right? But, um, so it needs, so for fire, I only transferred the amount I needed for the firefighters. So there's a balance and you're going to see it when we hit that resort tax. Eighty-eight thousand six hundred and ninety in reserve. We didn't spend it all. And then the little one percent transfer for the admin software audit, eight thousand four hundred and ninety-nine. So then we have our transfer from the permissive medical, which is, um, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand one eighty-six. So big chunk. That's how we're funding our general fund. There are really no surprises as we, as we look at expenditures. We hit some of those line items. You know, the, um, legislative services is coming in about the same as last year within, um, within three thousand dollars. I know that's a, a more than fifty-five. Really nothing outstanding there. We carried over the sound system. The city clerk and finance director replaced your chairs, but we're still looking for a sound system in here that captures everything and videos, whatever. That's, that's theirs. So that's still in your budget. We've just rolled that over from last year. Then we have, of course, tree, tree city. We allocate portions of salaries. We have to spend to be a tree city, uh, two times our population, which based on the census, we have to spend ten thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars. And we're spending, um, twenty-six thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. We're, we have the urban forestry contracts where we got about three thousand or, yeah, three thousand in grant funds, but we're, that was one of those projects that got rolled over. We're going to remove, or the deadly trees were removed over here. That was forty-five hundred dollars. And then we're planting, council, uh, planting replacement trees for thirty-two hundred. And those are still coming. So that's in the, that's in that budget. There is no change in, in city court. Minor line item changes based on actual expenses. City prosecution is adjusted according to our contract. Admin is essentially the same. Department of Finance, so saying there's a, we did have a little bit more overtime. We allocated. City clerk, um, had longer counseling. More, more time. So the one thing you'll see when you go through here are the contributions for health insurance. So remember our premium was one point nine percent? The city captured ninety percent of that with the employee picking it up. That, that's reflected in here. So. Uh, computers, we keep working on conversions. Our servers are more than ten years old. Had, my computer was replaced after twelve years and it's still kind of a hassle. I don't know what it is about computer conversions, but it works faster, works much faster. But can't always find the file, which is frustrating, but. So planning and zoning, part of my salary, we did. For the first time since two thousand and eighteen, sand surveying increased our, our rate. Still considerably less, um, as affordable then. We can't afford to hire a full-time planner. So facilities, so like I mentioned in here, we have, it's essentially the same for utilities. So under building maintenance, that, that it, that went up from twenty-one thousand to thirty-three thousand. So we have the flooring replacement. We just keep moving the manager's office flooring forward. When you replace carpet, you got to paint the darn walls, right? You got to move everything out. It hasn't been painted since nineteen ninety-four and it has some really old flooring carpet and yes, it should be done. And then, uh, so yeah, so we had that, it's mainly flooring. Law enforcement, so changing, and I didn't put it on a slide, but we're reorganizing the police department. We're transitioning back with the two sergeants. From the, from the lieutenant to two sergeants. So eliminating the lieutenant position. And the chief will have the chief and two sergeants. And then currently, um, due to, due to some medical staffing, we have two detectives because one is technically out, um, for now. And then, and then our officers. So we have young, young. We have less experienced officers. So to go back to the two sergeants, so we have a sergeant on shift because it's a patrol sergeant. So to have a sergeant on shift is critical to the chief. So we're going back to that model. And so with, so you'll see that, that like this chunk was, was only two percent in base wages. We had to increase overtime and insurance and so on, but the. It, it's now twelve FTE, twelve FTE, twelve full-time equivalent. Ten officers, one non-sportive.
Well, I'm not an officer.
I have one chief. We always do this counting thing and I'm like, but we're adding one. So, because that's what we needed to get, right? And we knew that. Unfortunately, so we thought we were adding that other, like when we went through that last advertising and then we lost an officer. He, he sought other employment. Not that we lost him. Sometimes I did. It's not literal.
Went to sheriff's department.
He went to the sheriff's department, yeah. I'm sure he misses us. But anyway, but we had, we had two very long-term officers retired. And including the sergeant. So that. Results in some vacancy savings. So when we go through this budget, most of it is, um, oh, and we had an additional officer pick up health insurance. Just looking at gas, oil, membership. It's very straightforward. There's not that, there's not that exciting. I mean, it is, but it's not. So. It is what it is, right? It's pretty straightforward. They, we've committed funds all along. We, we prudently committed funds, knowing that this is where we were going to get. And so, um, the chief is doing some, some more testing here pretty soon. Like we'll be, we'll be moving toward getting another officer, but. And, and getting that second sergeant position filled. And with, with our wage structure and negotiations, we're competitive. Like we're hoping that we get some experienced sergeant applicants. And I'm biased, but of course I think you'd like to work here. So you can see under fire, right, that, that wages are up a hundred and sixty percent because this one now reflects three full-time firefighters for the entire year and the chief. So, um. And then the contribution and so on. Anyway, so it goes, so we have, um. This one, like we've had to increase just a little bit of maintenance and repair and things, like, and fifty-four line items that. It, it's more expensive now to do the routine maintenance checks on those large apparatus. So we've had to increase that budget a little bit. Increased training because now we've got folks training for the firefighter one. And that the cost to us is seventeen hundred and fifty. So just, you know, it's bottom line, it's up a hundred and forty-eight percent, but remember we're coming in from. Three door tanks, just like, just like we thought it would. We did put, so you'll see ten thousand dollars in there for more flashing speed signs. Towel and veterans' drives, I believe. When, when we were evaluating, where else can we put these that say, hey, here's a speed limit? That help the police, right? Because they're a tool. They're a reminder, flashing in your face, slow down. They can't be everywhere. They try. They're, they're out there controlling because I see it in the gas bill and I see it on the mileage of vehicles. They're out there, uh, you can't see them. So, um, and then of course we have our flood control, our. We have a, we have a dam, so we have to maintain that. We rolled over some of that maintenance, but we really do have to get out there this year and do some bushwacking. It's, it's all part of it. Parks, parks and rec, we, we tweaked that a little bit. So we took one of the positions and made it more convenient because we had two, two quotas and two seasonal and it was a little payoff, right? Somebody had to be in charge. So, um, and we brought, that was with that job description. Like I said, you guys have been working on this for months. Then it all comes together in this printed document. So parks, um. We, so we have a placeholder in here on page fourteen of fifty-five. We have a placeholder for WGM and engineering for the fishing state. We have a placeholder for, um, WGM and engineering for the fishing stands pier. And you'll see I've got twenty-five thousand dollars in here. Um, so the Parks Committee had previously agreed, uh, for the Rotary Club that they, thus city, will pay for the engineering. And what this engineering contract gets us to is what will it cost to build a fishing stand or fishing pier? Or like stand-in pier and, um, Dave Peterson is on the brewery, so that's why I planned. So we said, we'll get you to there, right? Of what, because they want a fundraiser. And then there could, that fishing grant, um, that comes out in winter, right? So if we get the engineering done, we can apply for grants, we can work with Rotary. But we didn't know what it was gonna cost. They, the, um, Fish Wildlife and Parks had said, hey, it might be seventy thousand or seventy-five or, you know. So Parks had said, hey, we'll pay for the, we'll pay for the engineering, we'll get you there, right? Um, because that's not fair to have the fundraiser folks, um, paying for the engineering. So this includes, um, this gets us everything we would need to, like, just before you call for bids, right? Here it is, here's the engineer's estimate. Um, they go out and they drill in those soils to, like, you need concrete piers. What do you need in there? So that when somebody walks out to fish, they're safe. So, um, so that's in here. You can see we're rolling over the repair of the basketball court, the fifty-eight hundred dollars. Um, and then...
That was carried over from last year, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. So, so they finished the volleyball court and have them back. So the other big item that you're gonna see in here, so, under new improvements, crack fencing, right? Crack park, we're gonna, that fourteen thousand dollar fence we agree to, that's in here. As well as the basketball court fencing, which puts the eight-foot fence on the volleyball side.
The north.
The north side, okay. And then fences the whole court, so we can actually close it, right? Protect it. And we're gonna get the fencing done before we put on the new servicing, so that life will be good. So that's in here. So that's, so you see that Parks budget jumped up twenty-four percent. That's why, though, we're doing, we're doing some maintenance, right? You guys always say, hey, let's maintain what we've got. So that's what we're doing. Swimming pool wages are up because, because there, too, we have a younger, less experienced staff. So we always have one extra guard. Because these are our, these are, this, this is our community, these are our children and grandchildren in that pool. So we have, you know, we keep turning over guards. Like, they decide to, you know, go learn plenty of pilates and not come back. But we prepared them well, I think, but, um, but we had, so we had only three guards that had two years under the belt. And then the rest of them were, I mean, a great staff, but they're young. So in order to make sure that we're always got eyes and training, um, so we, so instead of, well, we, we increased it to one point seven eight FTE for twenty-twenty-four, so a little less. But it all depends, right? Like, we are not giving the kids that come back. We had a great staff. They've all indicated so far, like, hey, we wanna come back. And that's always, that's always good. But we did have to put more people out there, well, for the protection of our community. Um, and it gets them more hours, right? Because you go through a twenty-eight hour training class, bar, but that is, right? They get certified and then they're there, well, it takes, gotta keep your eyes, gotta keep your eyes open. So, um, chemical prices rose, and we'll see that in sewer as well, but chemicals rose. And then we'll have to replace a little bit of the gutter, but we didn't do the full gutter replacement. We buy, we get the little gutter pieces and, and replace them as needed. Um, under maintenance and repair, fourteen thousand dollars. You're gonna see that's up five hundred and sixty percent. It was one five hundred last year. We talked about this before, the heat exchanger, I think it went in on Saturday.
Yeah. It came across and claimed.
Yes, yes. So installed, twelve thousand, and then, um, and then we have to, we have to re-brook the bathhouse in that next line item. The floor is pushing, needing to be repainted, but the roof is in fashion. So based on that quote, so we'll get, we'll rough up the floor where we need to, and we'll get the roof done. So this hall, right, heat exchanger in. So the heat exchanger means that we don't have to buy a new boiler for five to six years. And so when you guys adopt your capital plan, um, that, that twenty-year and five-year look at, like, you're gonna see all this, right? That, hey, and this gives us more life. So like every other time, we just replace the exchanger and then we have to replace the boiler. So this was a, this was an expensive year, it's just the exchanger. So, but the roofing we have, I don't think the bathhouse is gonna re-brook. Like, some of the shingles were repaired, but looks like someone will put on bathrooms. Um, I don't get on ladders, so I didn't do any roofing. But anyway, that's in here. So pool looks a little more expensive because we're mainly communal. Um, so debt service, we got our co, we, our, our comprehensive liability insurance, so property and liability. So liability has a point eight-two mod factor, which is great, because that means we're controlling those expenses. Property program was up this year because the reinsurer required, not just MIA and the city, but required us to increase the value of our buildings, right? Because we haven't, we haven't insured for replacement though. So they're gonna, hey, you can't rebuild City Hall for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's not what we have an insurance for. But, um, like, so we had to go back and evaluate with MIA, the value of all of our, what would it really take to replace this building? Um, so you'll see that in, um, the general fund in water and sewer. It's like, yeah, it's a little bit more expensive, but understandable, right? So, so then your very last general fund item is to transfer to other funds. And as you know, it's based on what funding is available. Because we have city policy, oops. So we have a mandatory twenty percent reserve, set by the council. You can have up to a fifty percent reserve. This city council, I, years ago, said we're comfortable with twenty. But we don't wanna be cutting into that too much, right? Because, because of our revenues and so on. Like, you know, we need to fund this, like, we can't be short. And what, what if, what if all of a sudden, why, I, I was gonna say, what if we need a new roof on City Hall? Um, but, so we have the, we have the, we have the reserve. So the money that we had available to transfer out once we funded the department, and they might even say, well, we said we wanted this and she didn't put it in there. Well, it's a balancing act, right? What's the most important? What's critical? And, and what's critical is staffing, right? Because our lifeblood, our, so here are employees, this is how we work. We're a small city and we don't have that many employees. So, and then what do we need to operate? Obviously, you gotta put, gotta put fuel in the vehicle, you gotta keep tires on them, you have to keep them repaired and operational. And, um, and we have to maintain what we've got. So that's reflected. So what we had left after, okay, funded everything that needs to get funded, reflected some of the, like, like the fishing ponds, right? Like, what do we want to accomplish this year? Um, we have a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars left. And so we're transferring eighty-seven thousand dollars to equipment. We're not transferring anything to parks improvements this year, but we are making parks improvements out of the general fund. In streets, we're not transferring anything, but when we, when we hit the forty-four budget, you'll hear me, we're gonna take the four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. It's a one-time statutory appropriation. It can be used for either maintenance or construction. We're putting it into our construction fund. Then building improvements, which we'll talk about those building improvements, seventy-one thousand. So that's our hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So that is our four point two million dollar general fund budget. Fire relief pension is really easy. It's actuarially funded. We, every three years, we get it actuarial, um, completed. We're amortizing the liability over five years. The state wishes they were doing that. Um, but honestly, nobody could afford to amortize the state pension plans over five years. Um, so we amortize it, so the sixty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars, the five-year amortization, um, it's funded with property tax levy, the state entitlement, the portion of the state, state entitlement, as well as the insurance premium, which is essentially one point five mils of real property. So that comes from the insurance premiums that we all pay, every, everybody pays the fire insurance and it goes into this little fund and they give us some of this. So for our dedicated volunteer firefighters. So that's, that's pretty straightforward. We just collect the money, pay it into fire, into the fire relief pension, and it, and it's worth exactly like it's supposed to be. Um, so then our next, our next levy is permitted by the levy. And that, you know, that's an interesting mathematical calculation. And there's a, I mean, it'll be in your big budget book, but there's a statutory limit subject to a maximum calculation, which is three hundred and eleven thousand. So we're funding with resources, we're, we're limited, we're gonna fund three hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine sixty-four. Part of that goes in the general fund, part of it goes in the street maintenance. So it's, it's just a statutory calculation. So that is, that's these funds, that's all of our levy funds, that's the first four point six million. Any questions? Okay, we wanna go to that next sheet. Now this looks a little more donkey, because it says all this, right? I promise I... Nope, we'll go back to, go to, where are we? That's not, twenty-five. Here we go.
There's page twenty-six in the packet, if you're still on the packet, I believe.
Yes. Oh, here's twenty-four. Okay, so here's the recap of our non-letting funds. We have a lot of them. So that very first one, the one that you wanna talk about the most, I believe, is the resort tax. So the resort tax collections, so the collections that we received last year were one million four hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Now that's net, right? So that was after the businesses kept their five percent. So this year, we're anticipating the net to be one million five hundred thousand. Now, our collections came in, this were eleven point six percent for lodging, forty-six point nine percent for borrowing restaurants, and forty-one point five percent for retail. So for the city to receive one million five hundred thousand dollars, it means that they collected, that the total actually collected was one million, there's my number, one million five hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine forty-seven. With seventy-eight thousand nine forty-seven staying with the businesses. Now, automatically built in is twenty-five percent for tax relief, or currently the equivalent of thirty-two twenty-eight nine mils, three hundred and ninety-four thousand seven thirty-seven. Fifty-five percent for public safety, eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand four twenty-one. Other infrastructure, fourteen percent for other infrastructure, two hundred and twenty-one thousand fifty-three. And then the one percent city cost for audit and software, fifteen thousand seven eighty-nine. That would be, that would be what that revenue generates. Now that, that shows up here, this, that's part of this, right? Because we use last year's money, last year's money here. This, we're, we're reserving everything we collect this year. So we have, the other part of that reserve is from the twenty-one, twenty-two funds, the twenty-two, twenty-three, so the first funds that we got, the fire department still has sixty-seven thousand one sixty-six in reserve. Other infrastructure, seventy-six thousand four oh four. Then for these funds from last year, we have a hundred and seventeen thousand five seventy-nine in other infrastructure. And fire, remember, we didn't transfer everything, eighty-eight thousand six ninety-eight. That's part of this reserve, is this year's money and the funds you already have reserved. Now, Council, you haven't picked a specific, like, other infrastructure project to say, we wanna spend this money on X. It's important to note that, like, most of those grant funds or projects require matching funds. So for example, we know, City Council, we, we got the engineering on a quiet zone up to about, it's gonna be about eight hundred thousand dollars, right? Now, Congress passed through Department of Transit and Department of Transportation, first ever kind of projects that allow for quiet zones, but they had to have a twenty percent match. Other projects have matches. We, we know that from the TA grant, right? Thirteen point four two percent in that. We know that we're matching the build grant or the raise grant, five hundred thousand in water expansion, right? We're gonna be saving money to get to that five hundred thousand dollars, so we need to match those funds. Or we have to take some out of this reserve, right? So those funds, you have not specifically talked about yet on what do we wanna use them for? What are our priorities? Um, one of the other projects that you have not specifically dedicated funds is the sidewalk on Sich that turns into a bike path across School District Six, property, School District Six and breweries, to, to make that connection, right? And we had that bid, now there, it was below three hundred thousand, but it was in that two hundred and some thousand dollar range. These funds, so the fourteen percent that goes to other infrastructure can be used on other infrastructure. Parks, paths, sidewalks, water, sewer, buildings. We wanted to use those funds for a park bathroom, right? Other infrastructure. So you guys haven't talked about that specifically yet, and I haven't said, I think this rises to the top, right? Like the, like the St. Avenue sidewalk slash white path that adds that connection. Because that's what you guys get to decide, what is the most critical to put that money into? Now, the money that you're reserving for the fire department, so sixty-seven thousand and eighty-eight thousand, goes a long ways toward the city share and the new truck. So the last, the last pumper rescue truck that they looked at had that seven hundred thousand dollar price tag. Now remember, we share that, we're sharing this truck with rural. So the truck is distributed based on fifty percent of the cost or rent, it is distributed according to, um, tax value. And fifty percent based on call volume. So the city share is below three hundred thousand. Now, when we reviewed the, what debt can you take on without a go with the people, we were below that, at three, and it's below three hundred thousand. It's like two seventy-eight. It's like 278 is the city share. You have money to offset that. And you have money, you have a million dollars reserved in your Cedar Creek truck. This is principle, that you have reserve that you can borrow. And you have the street debt and the other fire truck. You borrow from yourselves and then pay it back. So you have money, but you also have some money here that you can say, "You know what, we want to buy down that part share of the fire truck." So, but the other infrastructure money we haven't really talked about, you know, because the first year it was only 76,000. And we've all looked at projects, right? 76,000 doesn't do half a block of sidewalk. And that's not your fault, of course you are. I kind of go, "How much?" We're just putting in sidewalk and curb and gutter, and how can it be 148,000? So the, so those funds, I want you to be thinking about what are your priorities? And as we meet with those individual communities and as you want to bring something forward, these are your funds, right? We know we need them. You've got a long list of things that you want to do that we can't do because this is not much longer than we have. Or we can't go after a specific grant because where's our matching funds? And all of this, where's the matching funds? Well, we, you know, we had 158,000 to put in the capital this year. And we needed some, we have to buy police cars. We have to get a wall in that police department. You're going to see it, right? So these funds, what is the highest priority? Now, we already engineered the path and the sidewalk and went, ew. Martinson is not the only engineer that would gasp at the price and said, "Whoa, we really want to do that, but where do we get the money?" Before the resort tax, which is when you guys first looked at that project, we didn't have matching funds. We didn't even have funds to contribute toward it. So we're doing things. So I don't throw it out there to spend it. It's reserved because you guys get to tell me, are we spending it? And what are we spending it on? So I track those categories of this is 14% and the amount that we didn't put into the general fund for fire. So that's your resort tax. Estimated collections, where they're going to go, what's held. So, you know, under other, we now have 184,000. Because we got two years. The 76,000 and 117,000. Oops. 76, okay, I added the fire, sorry. You have 190-some thousand dollars. That doesn't get us quite to the sidewalk and the bike path. Sixth Avenue, but almost. And then the fire, which, like I said, you're going to be able to use those funds. They'll buy down a truck. You have 190-some thousand dollars there, right? That we don't, that you're reserving. So you're following the vote, and this is where the funds go. There is never a shortage of infrastructure. And it comes to water, sewer, paths, streets. So resort tax, that's it. Any questions? And the mayor had a question, which is kind of for council discussion. His question was, should we? Like, I'm bringing this forward, I still believe that the 1,500,000 is still conservative. I believe that there will be money above that that will add to the already budgeted collection. Because remember how much money we're putting in this year, 849,000? So the mayor's question was, would it be prudent to not anticipate this conservative number, but to deliberately reduce that? Now, this one, I still, there's going to be, there's question there. Based on reviewing collections and what we have, what we don't have, what we, right? So, but I would suggest to you, when we look at, on page 1955, when we look at that we're going to have 868,421 dollars for public safety. Council, you could decide, like, you could leave this period. You could decide to reduce... You could reduce your maximum levy next time, right? You could reduce your levy because you have resort tax money to help fund decent fund. You can make that decision as well and say, "You know what?" Of course, when we look at capital leads, right, and trucks, like, how much do we need to save? But based on this collection, you would have, and just using that 64.36, which is not part of the vote, that's, you guys, you know, Public Safety Committee, you'll probably be reviewing that. But that would be 555,000, almost 556,000 for fire and 313,000 for relief. So you could reduce your regular levy. Or, it was a good question, I had, I didn't have drive-in time, I had flight time, right? Go, okay, this was the mayor's question. Are we better off, like, really looking at tax rebate at 25%? Because remember, our mils did this. So we know they're going to come up a little bit, right? Because instead of rebating, instead of rebating 70 mils, we're budgeting to rebate 30, almost 33 mils. But if you look at the fire and police parts of those budgets, 868,000 and more than funds them, right? Unless you reserve for capital. So you could reduce your regular levy. You could say, "You know what? Yep, we got tax rebate, but we got this money." Because there's the alternative, right? That my crystal ball is wrong and we don't collect this much.
So my question just simply was, so they say we're going to collect 1.5, collect 1.3, and that I put any excess over the 1.3 to go to tax rebate? And that was the crux of the question?
Right. Do you do it here? Do you deliberately, like I'm saying, hey, I think 1.5 is a conservative number. Based on the 1.4 we collected, I think this is conservative. I think we're going to go over it. But, or do we say, "Okay, we know this is what we're budgeting." Yes, we know that anything above it. So that was the mayor's question. Do we say, "Hey, see, this crystal ball says 1.5." Do we want to build into that the 1.3? And then, I mean, it was a good question. So I'm thinking, I go, "Okay, but if you got this money, you could reduce your mil, not just from the resort tax, but just not levying it, right? Because you're going to have, when we go back and we look at those general fund revenue sources and we say, "Where does our money come from?" So you know that next year you'd need, you know, another 300,000 in tax dollars, right? Because you're going to have the authority to raise even more than that. So that, it's where do you want the money to come from? Do you want to reduce mils? Because you have another revenue source. And so that's...
We'll put it back in, or give a bigger tax rebate again to the city taxpayers. After we're giving them 800, but we're giving us, we're giving 876,000, which is unexpected, but if you go next year, you're anticipating 25, it was 25%, correct?
25 is the mandated...
So you'd probably be looking at, you'd be looking at like 380,000 or something, or...
It was...
380,000 is key.
Yeah, it was, what is that, 394, about just under 33 mils.
Yeah, okay, so if you were to, it seems like, you know, we've shown that we can keep their taxes, we can serve the taxpayers in Columbia Falls by getting a higher rebate. It seems to me that would be the prudent thing to do.
And council, that's your decision.
Is this up for discussion now, or is that...
Hey, you're hearing, yes?
Yes, here.
Okay. I like that idea a lot, but I respectfully disagree with it. I like the 1.5 million budget. I do think that's still conservative. I think we'll overshoot it. I think this year has been, will end up, because of our very conservative estimates, will be a windfall for the taxpayers, for all of us, and that's wonderful. But what the resorts, tax committee had talked about, picked around all these issues, and we came down to that 25% was a very fair, very great rebate. And so if we purposely undershoot it now, then we're kind of taking our tax rebate to that 35, 40, maybe up even 50% of what we're doing through resort tax. And I think when everyone voted on this, and we knew that it was probably tax rebate, but it's really about public safety. So I don't want to backdoor it too hard into it. Collecting taxes to give a tax rebate? I want to keep its purpose there. We said this was funding public safety and these other things. And still, that between 30 and 40 mils that we're doing is still a very generous tax rebate. So I like where you're going, but I think it twists it a little bit further than I'd like to see it. It's a great windfall this year, it'll still be great in the future. Those are my thoughts.
One of the problems I have is just getting a real good grasp on, like, the collection of money. I don't have a very good sense of how much money is coming in in terms of, you know, they talked about things getting softer this year. Business owners might know differently about this, but that's always a concern of mine, is that things are getting softer. So we have this idea that things are going to go up, 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 up. And that makes me a little bit nervous. So I'd say I'm somewhere in between the two of you. I was on the resort tax committee. I agree that anything that we give back as head for property tax rebate is extra, is bonus. And I think it was important this year because of the way that the state projected the property taxes. And so I think it's optically a good thing this year with what happened. But ultimately, if you feel confident that 1.5 is where we will be, you're really confident about that, then I would say that that's where we need to go because that's what the intention of it was.
It's 25%. At the time, I was pushing for 30.
I'm going to say it. I mean, I do think optically, I think it was, it's great the way that it worked out this year. It certainly worked out for my family, I mean, it worked out. And part of that optics is something we didn't have any control over, that probably shouldn't have happened in the first place, the way that it came out. But I still say the 25% rebate is what city taxpayers are probably paying out
That was the purpose.
in resort taxes to even that out, and that's what the goal of it was.
And that was the purpose of it, I agree.
This evidence can't be touched. In the information I read today, revenue coming into the state is falling down dramatically. So if this 25% has agreed, leave it there.
But still, the thing I have is, leave it at the amount of money that we're protecting going to the fire department. And I guess police department also could regret how we don't have targeted anything that money targeted for. I think that we're being overly, I shouldn't say overly generous. No, really, because most of it's going into capital. I know, no matter what, the fire department is going to need a truck and it's going to take two to three years to order one, you can't want. So what else are they going to need in the meantime? And how much were we protecting with the 1.5? Susan was going to go to the fire, 877?
555,749.
This year?
Next year.
Yeah.
This year, we transferred 206,932 and only paid for two of the firefighters. Like, we didn't, we only transferred that. Police, we transferred 1,6692 to pay the budget. So let me do this, I understand. So, and for the state, you know, they're still seeing growth in income taxes, which we should flip that narrative because state income taxes are pretty high, right? If, council, if you're more comfortable with one tree, and I would have to grab my chocolate lager, but we can certainly change this. I mean, the 200,000 is not going to jeopardize public safety or...
Exactly, I guess that's what I was trying to say, within a reduction.
I would like to hear from...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Well, I agree with everything that's been said. You know, I'm certainly comfortable with the 25% that we said. You know, the 1.3 sounds better to me than 1.5. I do think that things are slow this year. What do I know, though? It's a bad shoot.
That's what we said when Dave said how much we were going to collect, he thought he was nuts. Nobody in this year. He underestimated.
I'm waiting for my turn.
And I think we can get, you know, as far as you, in wanting that maybe additional 5% raising it from 25 to 30%, I think there's other ways we can get back to the community even with parks and some of these projects that we have that we want to do.
So you're feeling, oh, 1.5 is where it should stay?
No, I think it should stay at 1.3. I think we should lower it to 1.3.
Kelly? Yeah, I think if the 1.5 is conservative, why not chop off, lower down to 1.3 conservative and not take a chance?
You say like 1.3.
I'm saying that if we got the 1.5 and that is supposed to be conservative, we take it down to 1.3 to be even more conservative with it. It's just kind of where I'm going with that one, so we don't... The crystal ball would be amazing if it was perfect. But we don't know, and I don't like taking the extra chances, saying we're going to have this much and then something happens, and we don't, and we're a bummer. It's not that much, it would be my point, but...
One opinion I've always found is if we come in less with our reserve tax, what happens if we budgeted these amounts using the 1.5 and we don't collect 1.5? If we collect 1.3 or 1.2, at that point, what happens to our budgeted number?
We specifically use 25% for property tax relief, 55% for public safety. So just so you guys know, if we said in our coffers, we're going to get 1.3 million, that means our businesses collected 1,368,421, right? Because they keep the 1%. 25% of tax relief will be 342,105. But if we collected 1.5, right? That means there'd be another 200,000. You'd be rebating 542,105 if it wasn't the 1.5 that came in. You know, and it's really interesting because when we got the estimates, when we got the estimates from Department of Transit, we had one hotel. Right, so even though we kind of factored in that second hotel, we have fewer restaurants and bars. And our retail, we didn't really have anything in retail, which I'm still, of course, when we say retail, that includes Smiths and Super 1. But their reported numbers of what they thought would be taxable, which of course here in line, and very limited product, right? So the sales were considerably less than that estimate than what they are now. It's staggering, those numbers, when they come in. So when you think about retail being 41... So when you think about retail being 41.5% of our collections, but you look at those coming in, I mean, I'm not... I agree, and this is a difficult fund to, like... Based on the reporting that we've seen so far, our market, they're not softening. And we're behind, right? Like, we're always behind. The housing recession, you know, when... You know, the last recession didn't hit us until about '08, right? It hit the East Coast five years before that. So what are we gonna... What are we seeing? And personally, I think that our Resort Tax Committee did like this huge effort to make sure that we were not taxing, you know, it's like, hey, you can walk out the door and need it, um, you know, but really thoughtfully went through, like, unlike some of our sister cities and other, you know, that tax everything, um, we don't do that. So that's why those numbers, because they were like, what jewelry stores do you have? What this, what that? Well, at the time, we didn't have... We didn't have these retail stores. And I'm amazed at what they sell, but, um... So yeah, so these numbers, so it's... I mean, counsel, it's up to you.
I... I, uh... We've got new businesses now that are just getting going. They're probably gonna generate throughout the local public, or the travel. 1.5 seems reasonable to me. 25% tax rebate to the citizens, that's what we sold this month. I am so comfortable with that. I, as a taxpayer, I don't care if I get 30%, I want my 25. Well, I'll tell you, I'll take the 30, but I don't need it. The citizens benefit from the excess wherever we go, as long as you do the right thing with it.
Exactly.
So, you know, I get my 25%, but we've got more. I can buy them a car. I can buy, you know, a new truck. Well, that benefits the city and the citizens. You know? So regardless, 1.3 to me, in my simple mind, 1.3, 1.5, I, taxpayer, should get 25%. And the extra in the coffers, we need to spend where we need to spend. And that's what we promise.
We had that argument then.
Yes, yes.
That's a... It's a... What Robson was saying, that what people in the city get isn't just about rebates. I mean, it's investments in quiet zones and parks.
And parks, I mean, all the citizens enjoy it, we have the time money for it.
I'm just... I just don't have a good sense of what money we bring in from the resort tax to know whether 1.3, 1.5 is a better number.
And may I ask, and Susan said it was 1.4-ish last year?
The net was 1,435,27.
Okay. And I'd agree with something, John, that we have a lot more businesses in town, and things are happening. We're still growing, and while people are regionally talking about the softening of some things, that's from, there's been a lot of artificial inflation in the past two years, which is stupid. And the things are happening in this town, just when I walk down, walk through my business to go home, and I walk down nucleus, and you see the activity there every damn night that did not happen the last couple of years. I don't think we'll have any... I can hear him having a little bit of trouble getting the 1.5 million. And even when we were on the Resort Tax Committee, and Dave was there, and I can't remember what numbers the state gave, like six or 700,000.
Double.
And that was, I thought it was an easy 1.1 to 1.2, just as a business entity, but I saw, and I think Dave knew it was gonna be higher than I knew, he's getting more experience in this. But I don't think we'll have a problem getting that 1.5. And just to tap on what John, Jamie said there, and I think Mike as well, if we get to the point when we have an extra million dollars in the fire budget, and we're just gonna get golden crusted trucks, then we'll start figuring some things out. But I think we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. But I, from edges as a business owner, I think the 1.5 is totally fine, seeing as we have that in and 1.7.
We hear from Mr. Peterson, who's on the committee. I would be interested.
So, how do you guys... Does 1.5 seem reasonable after our discussion, come everybody here?
No.
Well, let me do this, counsel. Let me look at the collections as they're still coming in, right? Because remember, last year, I took those nine months of collections and added in July and August and said, yeah, this is where we're gonna be. But surprise, 333,000 dollars came in in September for the quarter ending June, September, right? So our first year of collections was 518,453 for nine months. So extrapolate that for a year, that's 691,000, which kind of matched what Department of Revenue spent for everybody, hey, this is what you're gonna get. The surprise was the 1.4 million, right? The holy cow. Because we went from bar and restaurant that first year, 256,000 dollars for nine months, to 673,000 dollars. We went from the retail from 243,000 to 596,000. And launching from our one hotel and smattering of, for those, 18,918 to 100 and just under 166,000 dollars. Because the hotel got built, the second hotel got built, and it's booked, like, you probably can't get a room for next June, right? So yes, in the winter, it drops off, but they're full. They're at full capacity, and it's, I don't know what it cost to rent a room there.
$500.
Yeah. So that tax, right?
And they're not having trouble getting people with their backpacks out there.
It's hot, right? So...
You know, and I didn't bring it up, because I just wanted to have a discussion.
Yes.
I thought it was worth the discussion. And I, you know, the more we talk about it, the more I can see that I think we're gonna hit the 1.5. I don't know, I don't think visitation is gonna grow. I don't think the number of cars gonna be there, and word's gonna spread that we actually have things downtown. So at this point, I guess I would be comfortable with the 1.5 budget, the budget at this time, if you don't have the money there. I mean, you only get a percentage of what comes in, so...
First, I have a Maggie guy who's gonna talk me into 1.3.
What is the risk of taking 1.3 and make more in 2016? And with 1.5, and you make it, what's the risk?
And may I interject and correct if I'm wrong? If we did 1.3 instead of 1.5, and we made 1.5, the extra 200,000 dollars would automatically be tax relief. So that's the risk there is we, I mean, the risk, so to speak, is we're giving extra tax relief. On the other hand, if, let's say, we say it's 2 million, and we only bring in 1.5, still... So if we overshoot wildly, and say we anticipate we're gonna 2 million, and then we only bring in 1.5, the worst thing that happens is that 25% of that is still taxed. Because there's no downside. I mean, except for we have to adjust the budget and do other things. If we say it's gonna be 8 million next year, well, at the end of the day, whatever we collect, 25% still goes to taxes.
The automatic number, so it's protected.
Yeah.
So do we... Do we...
I don't think you have to change anything. I think at this point, I think the council's kind of...
Just reading them. Do you agree?
25% can't change.
Right. That number's cast in stone.
So this year's 25% would have been 209,965 in tax relief. On top of the 20 mils that would have dropped, you would have dropped another 209,000. Our excess revenue was 637,096 to get to our 847. So even at 25%, even at 394,000, that's still another, we're projecting like 100,000, 150,000, 100,000. Yeah, from 209 to 394. We're projecting even like more, like an increase in that.
It's gonna be more.
It's gonna be more. So... But what I will do, counsel, though, is I'll go back and look at collections now as they're coming in, and it does the software program, does a really, like, compares period to period, right? We have not yet seen any downturn in any collections. Nothing, no reports have come in where they're reporting less money than they reported for the same period last year. So, um... I don't know when winter will break. So resort tax, now, if you want, um... Want to hear from Dave now, because you're talking about resort tax, or you... Because I'm gonna talk about mostly these funds. Yeah. That's what we're doing tonight. Like, this is the culminate, like, we talked about pieces, right? The debts and the capital, but, so yeah, we...
I guess it would be kind of weird to have Dave speak to us now, speaking to how we're just in the middle of resort tax, because I assume that's what you're here for, Dave.
It is. Yeah, please. Oh, yeah, thank you. I guess for the record, Dave's using tool on, boy, that one is... I've been waiting for this, because this is kind of a luxury. When we used to be on the verge of bankruptcy, and we had, uh, trucks and whatever, and they'd been welding for a number of years, and we're struggling, unfortunately, we have Susan to run it and make five hours of like 10. But sitting here back watching this, on a budgeting level, I kind of think you have it a bit backwards. You know, the backwards part is, how much do we need? Need, not want. Want can be a big, long list, you know? We know in life, what you need to run parks. The moon, to service the basketball court. And that's gonna be a number. What do you need for the three additional firemen? Okay? That's, so I'd like to hear needs, not that we have this basket full of money, and what are we gonna do with it? You know? You know, I think, I think, I think we're maybe, uh, could look at it a little bit differently. And the other thing is, um, priorities. You know, we have priority for side block, and we have priority for, you know, legitimate priorities. But what I never hear is, what are the priorities for the taxpayer? Because you have that opportunity, what, you know, and I would think that it's reasonable that priorities to the taxpayer should be in the mix. I'm not saying it should be all, or this one, but it should be in the mix. And I'd like to hear, you know, some of that. But when I do hear this, well, we gave enough, hey, 25%? Are you kidding me? And that's like a, you know, a gift? Well, the resort tax is a money tree. Then it grows $100 bills. Then when this started out, uh, 400,000 was the number, and that was a critical number, because then, uh... Don, I know you're in the middle of this, you're looking at, well, we've got needs for the fire department. How are we gonna pay for the, you know, three firemen we need? And so, uh, using the 400, you ended up at 55%. And I'm sure to get to that number, a big part of it was, well, we got it, we have a need, and then we also have a need in the police department. Okay? Well, as it works out, the resort tax, the money tree, has given us more. Okay? And so the, um, pressure to support the fire department and the police department, and the parks, and, you know, everything else, the pressure's a lot less, because the money tree has given us more. And the other nice thing about the money tree is it's renewable, annually renewable, chugging along, bing, 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 for 20 years. Now, um, are we gonna be at 1.3, 1.5? Nobody knows the future. But I will say, we're gonna be at 2 faster than you can think, faster than you can win. We're headed to 2 so fast. Now, somewhere's gonna level off, but it's not now. And part of it, if you think about the COVID thing, uh, everybody's locked up in this and that, and everybody gets, not everybody, many people, uh, go, I just can't stand it, I gotta get out. Where do they go? They go to congregate, you know, and food, and beer, and socialize, and all that kind of stuff. That's not gonna change, you know? And then, and then I'm not gonna spend everybody's time going on and on about the world, but we are, I think it's fair to say, probably in one of the better places that you wanna live in, given, you know, what's going on. I wouldn't wanna be in Palm Springs right now, I wouldn't wanna be in LA right now. I definitely wouldn't wanna be in Phoenix right now. I want to have ducks coming, does anybody have any kind of duck? You know? I mean, and you can go on and on, right? So I don't think, um, we have to worry so much that, uh, we're gonna be in a cycle where it just falls apart. Because if we are in a cycle that falls apart, since we had an earthquake, and, you know, we had just something that you can't, okay? But I don't wanna get off, I guess, message. So what I'm thinking is, if you go with needs, instead of, they don't deserve it, are you kidding me? We're gonna give them 25%, and that's all you get. Because, well, the only thing you do is they lacked us. I mean, nah, man, what's my obligation to the people that are voting? Fuck, man, I'm not, you know? I mean, you know, I'm exaggerating, but I wanna make a point. I don't think that the taxpayers, um... It's ever too much to give them back, you know? And you take our community, retired people, fixed income, taxes up, you know, I mean, there's plenty of stories where tax relief is really a godsend, okay? And if you don't have the opportunity, you don't have the opportunity. But as a group, I think you have the opportunity. So if you go back to the 400 number, and the 55%, and the, um, 25%, and 14%, all right, well... So we get to 800, so double it. So when you were doing your calculations on how we're gonna fund the fire department, police, et cetera, et cetera, seems to me, if you go on a budget on a need basis, my question would be, why isn't a budget of 800,000 enough? You know? And Susan, I'm sure, would be, uh, able to tell me, you know, why 800, you know, for a number, double what the anticipation was. So who cares if 1.5 comes in, or 2 comes in? What's our need on a budget basis to cover all the bases? And if those bases are covered, well, then, why not have a tax relief for that cycle? Because like I said, it's renewable, it's this big tree, you know? And so it had $100 reloads at 400, well, it's got twice as many at 800, you know? And then it's 1.6, and it's 2, you know? I mean, this tree is getting bigger and bigger. And the other point I'd like to make is, it's more than likely, whatever the number is, um, it's not gonna go 1.5, and we're gonna have a disaster, and it's gonna go down to 500, you know? I mean, nobody has the total principle, but that just doesn't make sense. And so I don't think a conservative, um, approach, fiscally responsible, that the council is putting anybody in jeopardy by going through the needs test and not the wants test. Because that's what I'd like to hear. What do we really need to run the fire department? What's that number? And my guess is, in the police, and the public safety, et cetera. And I think that number on a need basis is gonna be considerably less than what the resort tax is producing. That shouldn't be a problem. And then the next year, you know, it's gonna go, probably, in terms of needs, budget, you know, it's gonna be somewhat similar. And I heard we're gonna need another policeman. Well, that's a need, you know? What's that number? But it's not, it's not 1.2, or 1.4, or 1.6, you know? I just, I just can't come up with the, um, the math, the supports, to spend that, even if... I just, I just can't come up with the, the math to support to spend that, even if, you know, money tree is falling on us, which is like cool, really, you know, anyway. And I have a bunch of numbers and everything, but I think you give my drift. And, and when I sit back here, I would like to, on a budget level, and we have talented people here, starting, you know, with City Manager and all you, like your son in background, have, you know, great experience in budgeting, and some of us run small businesses, you know? We know what a budget looks like. And we know what happens if you can't meet payroll. That sucks for the business owner and whoever was doing the work, right? Okay. If you're not in that situation, you've got, you know, and again, I just think it's kind of a fun place to be in the way. Columbia Falls has never had as much money as you do right now. It's never had the revenue sources that I'm aware of that have come together, you know, this time. But just because the money's come at you, you don't have to spend it, you know? Give it back to the taxpayer. Because it's coming around, it's, you know, it's renewable. Now, if this is a one-time thing, yeah, well, then whatever I'm saying, you know, doesn't hold water. But I think, I hope that you would consider just spend what you need to spend to have the stellar fire department, we have the police department, which I think is excellent, et cetera, you know? And then, like, like Maren, we disagree on this. Does you feel that there's a certain amount from what I hear, and we've got some conversations, that's good enough for the taxpayer? See, and I don't arrive at a good enough for the taxpayer. I arrive at taxes are to take care of basic needs, take care of a community, public safety, everything running smooth, et cetera, you know? That's the need. So that's kind of what I wanted to bring up, because you're sitting on a whole pile of money, but it doesn't have to be spent if there's not that need, because you're gonna get another pile next year, and after that, for twenty years, eighteen now, or whatever it is, right? So, but what's the rush to, you know, build this up and, and, you know, spend it? And give it back? Everybody's gonna be happy. So all those constituents, constituents, they're gonna go, yeah. Especially the ones that can't afford it, you know? Some people, it really doesn't matter that much, but for a lot of other people, it does. So that's one, two cents.
One thing I would say is, all those years I was involved in this counseling, I was fire chief and I was doing my own budgeting, when he quit, we had like a five-year sat pee, and he laid out not wishes, but wants with needs. It was needs. And every year, we'd say, okay, this year, we can pull this much money out of this fund and get towards two hundred and fifty or five hundred thousand dollars.
And then blow it again.
And then we were able to do that. Unfortunately, I think, and you pointed this out, Dave, and I agree, maybe we, we didn't have the public safety meetings that we should have had, maybe we didn't diligently enough with our police chief and with our fire chief to actually get this up before we got to this point. So I would like to see that in the next year, especially. Let's, let's do, I, I agree with you, Dave. And we need to see, what do we need? And then we'll say, okay, we have the ability to fund, do we need to hire another two firemen? I don't know.
We can't, we can't, we can't fund two more firemen.
I know, but I'm saying in the future, it might be something we can do.
So, because I disagree, these are needs. The hundred, the, the money that went to the police department, we needed that for staffing, so perhaps I was not clear when I, these are needs. The, the three full-time firefighters, we knew in our earlier projections, we were only gonna be able to bring on two firefighters, right? Or we didn't have a truck. And you firemen explained to me how, and we were relying on the chief and two firefighters. So the amount that we transferred into the general fund, the two hundred and six thousand nine thirty-two, that pays for two full-time firefighters. That's wages and benefits. That's the, what's the fire, what's the work comp, it's retirement. Retirement's expensive for firefighters, but these are needs.
But the, the number I kept hearing earlier was, they're gonna have eight hundred thousand or seven hundred thousand. And we, and we could be looking at, maybe we should be looking at getting a truck because this, that, and the other thing. But that, what I, what I'm hearing, that it, that it sounds like there is an excess.
No. That's if that money comes in, and that's what I told you early on, you could reduce this, you could force additional rebate, or you could decide that you are going to reduce mills because now you have more money. But these budgets, but, I mean, trust me, when I say, I've said no to things, right? Like, hey, here we are, this is the funds that are available, this is the need. We'll get fuel in the trucks, we'll get them maintained. The three firefighters, that became our goal, that the only amount that we transferred into the general fund for fire and police were for that personnel. There wa, there was not, and then you're saving, you're saving some money, right? Because remember, that truck, that seven hundred thousand dollar truck, that replaces one truck, that replaces in that scheme, and, and council, you will see, in, in your future, you're gonna see your old twenty-year, five-year CIP, but we are just bringing forward needs.
Yeah, I think respectfully, Dave, that Susan has all of her department heads, and she goes to them on an annual basis when it's budget time. And she tells them, you look at your budget and tell me what the needs are. And they go through that. And frankly, in my opinion, if we had any extra money, it would go to increasing wages for our police, for our firemen. I mean, we can't keep them now. And part of that is because they're going to the sheriff's department where they can get better wages. That's a need. That's a real significant need. So those department heads come back and they discuss, what do we need? And then they have all the other constraints, they have the unions, they have all the regulations they have to follow, et cetera, et cetera. So I believe that this budget is a need-based budget, and it is tight, really, really tight. There is very little fluff in here at all. So, you know?
Can I ask you a question? Let's say, let's say it was eight hundred thousand.
What was eight hundred thousand?
The resort tax, the money tree gave eight hundred thousand. Which would be a nice chunk of change, considering two, two hundred years ago was zero. Would Columbia Falls crash and burn? Would we go without? Would we have less public safety?
We did that line off some people, I can tell you that right now.
Yeah.
We couldn't, we couldn't.
That's a question.
Yeah, I mean.
Because I.
Yeah.
Right, because fifty-five percent.
Because we used to get five, not much.
Well, and we also needed paid firemen, and the very first week with paid firemen, they saved the house. And, you know, I, we need public safety, we need to be able to add an officer, because look at our growth, right? If you look at what we got to grow, like, boom, five thousand dollars in new tax, great, right? Like, five thousand dollars. And that, that eleven thousand dollars, like, we, we could have with the maximum levy, you know, with before rebate, I mean, we're looking at twenty-four thousand dollars, so we have to add to the tax. That doesn't give us firemen, that doesn't give us police. If we only collected eight hundred thousand, we would not have three paid firefighters. We wouldn't have a truck. The chief would still, it'd still be, I mean, fantastic volunteers, but what we've seen in this daytime response, the saves and the, and the timing, I mean, that four-minute response to that fire on the fourth, that's why, that's why our community said yes. So initially, we were talking about two paid firefighters. We wanted three, rural fires paying for one. The only amount that we're transferring in is for two firefighters and rural's paying for the other one, right? We're running that truck, and it's working exactly like it's supposed to. But when I say that these guys, like, they say, hey, what about this, what about this? Like, here's the fund, right? This is how much money we have. So I don't want that impression to be that we have a bucket of money. Now, if we get, if we net one point five million, the fifty-five percent for public safety could be, could generate eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand. That doesn't mean that's what you're putting in your general fund budget, right? Nobody, I mean, all of a sudden, you're not adding four more policemen, besides that we can't even find four more policemen.
Not everyone's.
We are years away from being able to add another paid firefighter. Years away, right? And we've got these three, we got this great volunteer fire department, but when you look at all of those lineups, other than, hey, we added staff, right, which adds to work comp and retirement and everything else. Yeah, we gotta quit, the gas prices went up, we gotta quit fueling, we have to maintain the back house that, that is conservative. And you're right, every one of these budgets, so when, when I say, hey, here's the projection, you will not hear me say, oh, yeah, next year, Plink gets whatever he wants. Because that's not, that's not Columbia Falls, and that's not how it works.
Right, no harm in that. It's just.
It's, if we don't have, if we're gonna have this resort tax, we're using this resort tax for public safety, for infrastructure, if we don't need it, then why do we have it? So, I mean, I feel like even if it means that fourteen percent for, that sort of is for infrastructure, fourteen percent for other infrastructure, you know, you may not see a quiet zone that's in need or sidewalks is in need, but I can guarantee that those are things that the public wants. And that's important too. It's quality of life, and quality of life in Columbia Falls is important as well. And we're not gonna get that million dollars for the quiet zone in a year, but if there can be savings towards it, I think that that's a responsible way to go about.
And you have that whole list. We have this whole list of unfunded things of what about this? And occasionally, you know, somebody laughs, okay, where's the quiet zone? Well, it's on your list. Your budget message will include all of that, right? That all these things that we want to do or need to do, right? And we say, okay, but where do we get the money? Because even matching funds is critical. We can't apply for a grant that we know that we can't, where, and they say, okay, we need the letter that says this is where the funds are dedicated, but we can't say we're gonna try to save them.
Well, and as our population increases, which it has and will, our needs are going to increase, and having it, the rebate or giving back to the taxpayers twenty-five percent, let's say that hypothetically, we raise it to thirty percent this year, what happens if next year, we have greater needs and we have to lower it back to twenty-two percent? I mean, do you wanna get to the point?
You can't do that, can you?
No, you can't lower it to twenty-two.
Well, the point being, the point being, I mean, if you wanna get into that up and down, twenty-five percent is, in my opinion, very generous, and I am on a fixed income. That's, I don't expect any more than that. That's what I voted on.
I, I'd like to say one thing, and that is, when I talk about my prior experience working with budgets, as both in the council and as fire chief, the only thing I'm missing is I don't have a list. We have a CIP list or whatever in front of me. I mean, you've talked to the heads, you said you want this, this is all I can fund. If I could see that, and I haven't seen it.
We have no fire truck in this budget.
All I'm saying is, I have not seen any of that. If I want, if I see it on paper that it says in twenty twenty-five, we're gonna need two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or we're gonna need two hundred for the next five years. And then it, it came back to exactly what you're showing. All I'm saying is that I haven't seen that, since I, I know it's there, but I haven't seen.
You're looking at this year, and you're gonna see a twenty-year, five-year.
That's all I'm, that's all I'm saying, that's the needs.
It's coming.
Yeah.
And so, so I'm telling you right now, this is all we can fund. Yes, fire department's looking at a seven hundred thousand dollar truck. I don't think you've heard anything tonight that says, hey, we could just write a check for that, because we can. Thankfully, we share it with rural, that we split that cost. But, so, do you guys, do you wanna take a short break?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I'm gonna get a home watch.
I need to call my biggest.
Oh, I got something weird on the bottom.
I rinse it out.
Yeah.
Hey, John, I don't know what I'm talking about.
I'm serious. Prior to that. If I wanted.
Budgeting one million, two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars this year, we have resources, right? Because we saved them. So with your tax increment district fund, we're doing the downtown projects CR. So we're doing the downtown parking for better sidewalk, which, as you know, was like, hang on your hat.
What page are you on today?
I'm on page six of thirty-four. And twenty of four. Twenty of fifty-five. So, so we're setting aside that money. We also always set aside money, it used to be seventy-five thousand for alleys and sidewalk improvements, that's kind of outside of our project, I think. Funeral home, replace a chunk of sidewalk that we paid for half, right? So separate from that. Project engineering, we've got some balance there. We're not transferring any additional funds into the EDA fund at this time, just the 12th Avenue West project. So the Department of Transportation, that crossing was designated, and we talked about this a little bit, as section one thirty. And I didn't know what that meant. I kept asking the state, what does that mean? Well, what that means is, eighty percent of the cost to improve the crossing will be paid by, not, by, by, by the state and twenty percent by DNSF. Now, outstanding on our 12th Avenue West project, on this EDA, this hundred and ninety-eight thousand, we have a little bit of, we have a little bit of engineering left, and then we had to do a stop order for the sidewalk, right, that goes over the, over the railroad right there. So, so we, so we did that stop order, so, but, we didn't know if we were gonna have to take a chunk of this money and put it into twelve, into that EDA project, because that's non, so EDA, it's fifty-fifty, right, in the matching funds. Our original matching funds are out of this fund, tax increment, you can see that in that it transfers out. We transferred a total of four hundred and thirteen thousand, one forty-six into the EDA project. This was our only funding source, right? So, the good news is that we're not gonna, that ka-ching, ka-ching about, we want arms, we want this, we want that. The bad news is that DNSF and the state could take a whole another year to review engineering. Now, they send us bills, they, so our, our engineer left, but they send, their, they send us the bills for their engineering to review our engineering. So, anyway, so that's the good news. So this project, this fund is really straightforward, the one point two four nine million based on what we think we're doing. Our Ted, both of our Ted, industrial park, so out, out there, big industrial park, we've, we've raised so far twenty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Doesn't give us like to extend sewer line, right, sewer beam. And then Columbia Rising, that fund, because, because they actually got the equipment on there, right, we saw an increase, hundred and thirty thousand. Now, what we don't know until everybody sets their levies is what the new money is. Well, we don't have any projects with them, but remember, these, these expire in after fifteen years. in, after 15 years. They expire. So, you know, I encourage folks to, hey, if you're gonna do a project, or you, because remember Columbia Rising inherited the old concrete water sewer, right? So we got, there's a a six and an eight and a 10-inch main that come in there. They know they need to do something different. Okay, well, we can help you, but you gotta do something. So they haven't moved on that. 24,000 doesn't get us much of, of improvement. We could use it towards the quiet zone as a fourth, right? The, the roadway is part of that industrial park. Remember that 800,000 dollar number? So, so these are just kind of placeholders, um, as we move, as we move through that. So we'll know later what revenues, and as a project comes up. So building code, I told you I reduced, reduced the amount to about two-thirds what we budgeted the year before. Um, last year, we had, you know, a smattering of, of building permits, not many. Um, 23 fiscal year was 42 total permits. But that included all those remodels and everything. So we had seven new single family with a value of 3 million. And we had four commercial with a value of 5 million. And then we had all those decks and remodels and garages, and 11 commercial remodels. So when we look at it, we say, okay, this is what we think we're gonna, what we're gonna get. And then, and then our expenses. So we still pay Whitefish 65% of our building permit revenue. So that's the, that's the big chunk in the budget, right? 70,000, based on what we will pay them. Starting back in 2018, if, if we don't generate a minimum of 2,000 in fees, like this month of July, you guys saw the claim, and we had about 1,400 between building mechanical, plumbing, electrical. So we had to pay the 2,000. That happens to us a couple months out of the year. Having that happen in July is a little, this is construction season. So, um, anyway, building, building code budget is pretty straightforward. Street lighting, so you've got your resolution to adopt the 30,000, 49 dollars. This one, street lighting is very straightforward. And we, and we carry, we, we carry a reserve. And we also budget money in case we have to replace some of those expensive lights down in Cedar Point and Lenz Editions, the more decorative lights, right? Otherwise, we pay the electrical bill. Um, we will be adding lights on 12th Avenue West. So, so then street maintenance. So street maintenance, we increased it from 316 to 330,000. And I'm on page 12 of 34. So, we always talk about, so you're gonna see something with street maintenance. This budget, 554,000. And we're maintaining about 39 miles of streets and alleys. So our assessment, we looked at 330,000. And we have to start looking at those small incremental changes, right? If we look at 5% per year, like next year, we'd be looking at 346.5, 363. Up till, like, if we get 5% every year, 400,000. Because we supplemented this with our gas tax fund. So this year, instead of this chunk is in 2,500, and then we have 28, 20, and then we have this. What you're gonna see this year is, I'm transferring in from the gas tax fund, 143,494. And then all of the expenses are in here. So what does it take for us to maintain our streets? So we, we knew that we needed more help, right? So we, the two floaters, right? So we have our three full-time people, and we have added two floaters. And that, what that did though, is, is we used to steal water and sewer operators, primarily water. Like, water operators were out moving snow, and then they'd get a call and go do a, um, a, a work order in water or something. So we said, no, we really do need people. We need those five people out there calling. So we've committed to these resources. So when you look at this budget, I mean, there are all needs. We are funding 143,000 out of the gas tax fund. So this year, the gas tax fund changed. So you'll see that I'm budgeting 135,720 in this special road. Because we, we committed a year ago. This is, street construction that rolled over, right? Our contractor is out there right now, working on that first priority road. We were using some of this money and some of this money. So this week, this was our 22 money. Well, then our 23 money, partway, we, we got our allocation notice, and the legislature said, timeout. We're just gonna lump it in and send it all to you in, in this really odd schedule. Like, we're gonna, you're gonna get your base gas tax, so your Varso money, your special gas tax money, is gonna come based on the previous month's collections. So we just got the July collections here last week. Now, the state had projected that we were gonna get 21,000. We got 17. So I took their 230,000 estimate and downgraded it a little bit, because there was no way we were gonna get. I mean, if they downgrade, if they were off 4,000 in some of the business part of the year, what, what's the rest? So, and then we give one-time money, right? Because they were holding our money, the 194,000. They were holding it. And then they're gonna, they're supposed to give it to us on September 1st. So when you look at Fund 2500, also look at 20, 28, 20. And, and, and so when we look at those, and we say, okay, what does it cost to maintain our streets? Well, our street assessment, you know, we didn't change it for many years, and then we bumped it up a little bit. But we really do need to look at, and we're gonna talk about this with water and sewer too. We have to look at small incremental changes, so that we don't end up, and I'm not picking on our sister city, so we don't end up with a 50% increase in five years. Or four, four years, 2026, right? Like, 15, 15, 10, 3. Which, you know, is, is that state. We already know, so our water sewer increase was in 2018 with those PERs. We know that water runs tight, right? Now, it does help us that we had a long-term employee retire. And, you know, we have competitive wages. Will not make the same as a former employee. Right? We have, we have a negotiated contract. And sewer runs tight too. Like, we always tend to cut a lot of the needs out of sewer, because we have to make that debt capacity, which, you know, so that, that adds in. But if we look at small, so this fall, look at small incremental changes, so that we know that we're leading, not only debt capacity, but operational cost. Because like I mentioned, like, street chemicals, right? That, the stuff we put on the streets, guess what? It costs a whole lot more money now. So, so that we don't use all alum and sewer, but we use the poly. What the heck is the name of that stuff? It went up 18% the last truck that we got. 18%. So do you really budget the old numbers? Like, no, because you're just gonna overspend your, your budget. So, um, so gas tax. So this fund, so, and we had spent down, so in 2,500, we spent down the reserve previously. And then it runs, it kind of runs indirect. One of the benefits of putting it all in here, and transferring from the gas tax, is that you can, we're not reliant on collecting revenues just twice a year. So, so we have to look, council, it's a public safety committee, you're gonna, or public works committee, rather, you're gonna be talking about street maintenance and water and sewer. What are palpable increases, so that when we do get, right? So we finished, we finished those water projects. Um, but you can see, we still use 229,000, and we still use 380,000 to fund our operations by granite, their million-dollar budgets. But we carry over cash. So our operating cash, here in the 131,000 is where we ended in water, after we paid our liabilities. So we're, so we're, some of this is safe, you know, gets moved down here to safer capital. But I wanted you to see the number beforehand. Water, we were really close, like, we were within 30,000 in last year's budget in meeting our debt capacity, because we've got the, we have the, the, um, debt, the debt for the well, right? So we have new debt. And now we only have to mean 10%. Our revenues have to exceed our expenditures by 10%. Old days, it was 25%. And of course, we still have sewer debt. So as we start working on the, like, that project, and the engineers are like, well, it's okay, if costs go up, you can just borrow money. And, um, I keep saying, no, we don't wanna borrow money, because we have some federal money, right? And we have some ARCA money. And ARCA money, 907,000. So we use some ARCA money for water, for the, for that Middle East North project. And we use some of the 1.5 million for the sewer portion that we've done now. This is the balance. So that gets funded, like, this is a transfer in, this is a revenue into sewer. They don't pay for that sewer project. So you can see I'm fast-tracking some of these. But it's because they're all related, and they all, they all fall together. But we have to look at small incremental raises, because we have to look at, what does it really cost us to maintain these streets? And we are maintenance, right? We don't have a lot of construction funds. That one-time statutory appropriation of 424,000. Remember, we didn't have enough money, we only had 158,000 left in the general fund to transfer to capital. I said, hey, I'm gonna put that 424,000 in the street construction, because we can use it for maintenance and construction. Because we don't often get money. So this was a statutory appropriation from, and I wrote it on, on the budget page on 4040, one-time for cities less than, less than 10,000. It was, folks, Senate Bill 536. It's not often that we get pennies from, from Florida. But we did. So by putting it in there, right, that helps us, because we saw the list, right? We called for bids, and we're doing one priority project, because we went gulp. It's how much, it's how much to pave a road? Like, we thought we were gonna get at least the first five roads done. But we couldn't, right? So, so the street maintenance, you'll see in your notes that I'm saying, hey, but we have to talk. We have to look at a small incremental raise to get it up there, because we're using 143,000 of gas tax. Maybe that's where you wanna be. But gas tax fluctuates with, with usage. So, um, we know that we needed the people. Um, they always have a list of what it needs. Always. And you'll see when we look at 4020, they got 36,000 for it. Because that's what we have, right? So, um, if, are there any questions over street maintenance or anything like so far? All right, your Cedar Creek Trust, all of your internal debt is paid off. So what we have in the Cedar Creek Trust, like I said, you've got principal. And then we budget this 182,000. This money, council, you have previously set aside for, um, using it, like, for sidewalks outside of TIP, right? For other improvements. Um, you could use it for a park. Well, actually, you could go to use restricted funds for front bathrooms. But these are pretty much your funds. But we put them in for new improvements, like if there's 50/50 sidewalk, or some other community project. So this represents the unreserved cash balance plus projected interest earnings, right? And that's what, that's what you can spend. Here's your principal. And, and we're projecting that that principal is gonna earn 45,000 in interest.
Susan, we have sideboards on what that can be used for, right?
The principal, yes. Um, in your trust document, you can use it for land or buildings. And it takes a vote in the council. So, um, so anyways, paying off that debt, paying off this, so this year, I shouldn't have said, the, the last fire truck payment, that was, the fire from the trust, 34,000. The principal and interest is gonna be paid off, 14,943. Comes in, comes into these resources. The principal amount is 14,398. That is, that gets added here, you can only spend the interest. So that's, so that's in here. So again, then all of that, that debt gets paid off with this, with this budget. And it's already paid off in the other. So, let's see, gas tax, special gas tax allocation, you already know, you're spending it on ARCA. The bid for that street, just as they started, was 896,431. You're using 135,000 of gas tax, special gas tax, and then 761, 761,359 out of, out of here. Now, this is this placeholder in case we can do another street, right? Now, council can always amend the budget by, by adopting a resolution when you have either grant, new grant funds, or you have cash on hand. You can, you can amend it. All right, what other? So the Fund 2940, that CBG program, that's our partnership with Northwest Community Land Trust, Kenmore and Saki's group. We have currently in the bank, 151,016. We're projecting from Teakettle Vista, we'll get the 7627. Um, so you have a maximum of 158,643 to put toward affordable housing that must, right? So and just as a reminder, your special revenue funds, they often refer to those to as fenced funds, right? They have to be used for that specific purpose. So, um, so we have that fund, that, you know, EDA we talked about, and it's in, kinda like, we approved the receivable for the grant. The developed, the property owner, Cedar Creek Medical. So we approved that 160,000, their portion was 320,000. They're paying it here in September. So that's, that's the EDA. We're jumping through all those hoops. The attorney has sent all the cyber reviews out. They always ask for more stuff after they've asked for it. So, um, so jumping to 19 of 34, the ARCA fund, 2991. That was one-time money, right, from the federal government. And using that for water and sewer, so as I already mentioned, that's 907,671. You're putting that into the sewer project. And hopefully, we don't have to raise rates for those sewer projects. Hopefully, we don't have to incur debt, because we have to raise rates sooner than we want to. So we've talked about debt. And the special improvement debt. I'm gonna skip over your 3,000 tons. All right. So our building improvements. We, this year, so we're transferring 71,000 from the, from the general fund into Fund 4,000. I'm on page 24 of 34, Fund 4,000. So, um, so we say in building, we're gonna spend 136,000. That's 30,000 for the police department, to put a wall between the squadron and the walking area. A full wall. We have not gotten a final estimate from the contractor, but that's kind of in the pipeline. Um, and then 106,000 for the, at the street shop. So they've talked about adding storage, and last year, we... So they've talked about adding storage, and last year, we, what did we do last year? We enclosed the cold storage. And this year, they want to add insulation and so on, and add on to the building. So it was less expensive to enclose the cold storage than to add on even more. So that's one of those that we're all like, mm-hmm, don't know. And I don't know if we can get, if we can get it for this price, but. So parks improvements, so the, so the parks budget, so Fund 4010, Page 25, it's a hundred and, the only thing I put in the budget is we, the parks, we, but we have some fund saved, right? $21,000, if you guys know that isn't a very far. What I put in the budget was the things that we rolled over. We, a bathroom for Columbus, well, we rebudgeted the bathroom, or we rebudgeted a bathroom. We had looked at Pinewood Park, potentially, and I haven't heard back from the state park people to find out about the branch, right? If they want to partner with us. And then the Columbus playground that didn't get installed. So just those two, rolled over the bathroom, rolled over the playground. $30,000 of this, 211, 656 is, is dedicated to the park. I think this is not a lot, all right? But, so you have a little bit of money. Remember, so this is interest earnings and another $1,000 cash and move on Diane Road for the Lion Park. But we, we didn't have enough money to transfer money into parks, more money into the parks fund. We like to be able to use the money that we have to leverage grants, right? Like, the fishing grants have, have matching funds, the land water conservation have 20% matching funds. Some of them have 50/50 matching funds. So, but, but the parks, there may be something else that you're, you're dying to get to. But that's where that other, and that's why I don't make any assumptions, where do you want to put your other infrastructure? Because what I'll give you is the list of what you've talked about. Including, you know, small splash pad, park pavilions that we've gotten estimates on, right? And everything is always more expensive than we think it is. So this is a basic park budget. General equipment, Fund 4020, Page 26 of 34. We are transferring in $87,000. We are projected to spend $146,000. Now, we had transferred some of that gas tax money. Remember, we could, as a small city, we could put in 25% into cash.